Good evening, everyone. It is right at 6 o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order and get it started. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. If you're logged in by Zoom, we thank you for logging in as well. We'll open that up when it gets to the comments time to where you have an opportunity to speak as well. To return the favor to my predecessor who had me lead with the invocation during his final meeting in December, I'd like to ask Mr. Robert P. Jones if he would lead us in a prayer before we get started.
I'll be honest with you, Chris. Chairman, thank you very much. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, you have graced us for another day. We are grateful that you have granted us another opportunity, Lord, to be in a group that as the council here makes a decision as they go forward, may they realize that the decisions they make affect someone in this little county of ours that is so close and dear to our hearts. Guide and go with us as we go through today. Be with the leadership of this group. Be with the leadership that is in this room right here, that they might do the right decisions as years to come. Guide and direct us in the path you have us to go and be with us as we go forward. And, Lord, I pray that everybody hugs their family when they go on. Amen.
Mr. Flemmons or Deputy Flemmons, if you would, would you lead us in the flag of pleats?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this down while I talk so that you can hear and I can breathe at the same time. We will go through. We've got item number four on our agenda is amendments to the agenda. We do have one amendment prior to coming in. That's under the executive session to add item eight, the approval of the executive session minutes, so that when we come out that we do have an approval. Only it was just an oversight when we typed it up. I'd like to see if we could have a move to add that item into our agenda.
I'd like to make a move to add it to the agenda.
Second, any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. So we'll move straight from that to our employee and other recognitions. I know we typically honor employees for their years of service. We do have one that met that criteria that can't be here tonight, but will be at our next board meeting. So we're going to move that particular employee to our next board meeting to make sure that we give them an opportunity to receive that. But we do have a couple others that we want to do while we're here. I'll turn this over to Ms. Denny here and let her...
Thank you very much. If you'll all stand, if everyone here is standing, our minister always tells us when he's going to say something important, get wrong to something. So here we go. Proclamation. If you'll come up, Rob Jones, please, and stand up here with us. A proclamation honoring Robert P. Jones, Chairman of the Pickens County Board of Commissioners from January 1st, 2004 through December 31st, 2020. Whereas Robert P. Jones served Pickens County with distinguished and outstanding strengths and qualities for 16 years, and whereas his length of service to Pickens County includes numerous worthwhile and lasting accomplishments, and whereas Robert P. Jones served Pickens County with a commitment to excellence, including his many civic contributions and participation, and whereas Pickens County is privileged to have had a chairman with such character and integrity as Robert P. Jones. Now therefore be it resolved that Robert P. Jones is hereby honored for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Pickens County, and be it further reserved that copy of this proclamation be presented to Robert P. Jones at a Board of Commissioners meeting. And a copy of this proclamation shall be a permanent record of Pickens County, signed this 18th day of February 2021 by Chris Snansel, Chairman, Becky Denny, and Jerry Barnes.
This was the flag that was flying your last day in office. So we sweeps the flag out. We wanted to make sure to present this. We had taken it down right after and have kind of been holding this for a little while. And wanted to make sure that we present this flag to you as well, so that you can have that as a keepsake.
Yeah, you'll stay there.
Yeah, I know, I'm a liar.
I didn't say that.
Y'all only understood how many questions he asked about why I wanted him to come to this meeting. You understand?
No.
See? Oh, you do.
Yeah, I was there.
Come on up. Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, everybody sit your ass down. Don't you? Where does that come from?
May not be able to get us all. You'll be on that side?
You want to go first?
Well, I was wondering about supper tonight, but I guess that mips is in the bud. That I'm just a partial liar. So Mr. Sloan L. Rodd, would you come aboard for just a moment, please? My story to Robb, to get Robb to come, was that we were going to recognize Sloan. My story to Sloan was that we were going to recognize Robb. They were both true. They just were in different times. So I'd like to read a proclamation here as well. This is a proclamation honoring Sloan L. Rodd, Pickens County Fire Chief. Whereas Sloan T. L. Rodd serves with distinguished and outstanding strengths and qualities as Pickens County Fire Chief, this great responsibility includes fire, rescue, and 911 operation. Whereas Sloan T. L. Rodd's length of service to Pickens County includes numerous worthwhile and lasting accomplishments leading our emergency teams during crisis to assist citizens of the county. And whereas Sloan T. L. Rodd serves Pickens County with a commitment to excellence, including his many civic duties and participation, he has gone above and beyond to assist during the COVID-19 pandemic and has been instrumental in administering vaccines to the public at large. And whereas Pickens County is privileged to have Fire Chief with such character integrity as Sloan T. L. Rodd, now therefore be it resolved that Sloan T. L. Rodd is hereby honored for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Pickens County, and be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Sloan at the Board of Commissioners meeting, and a copy of the proclamation shall become a permanent record of Pickens County, signed this 18th day of February 2021 by all three commissioners. I would like to have Robb, if you would, to come back up for these pictures because he did serve under you for such a length of time. So if you don't mind, to come forward.
Your fault.
Just bending the truth. It wasn't a total lie. So we also have reached out to other elected officials and department heads, wanting them if they have employees to recognize, and invited them to come and be a part. So Sheriff Craig is here as well tonight. So Sheriff, I'm going to turn the floor over to you and let you take that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner, and just thank the opportunity from our commissioners to be here tonight and be able to present a couple awards. And I guess it goes back to what you just said, that everybody wants to say that politicians, elected officials are a bunch of liars. I too have to confess that I've kind of lied to a guy tonight to get him here to recognize him as an employee. Each month, we recognize an Employee of the Month. And our December Employee of the Month is David Key. David, if you would come up. Also with me tonight is Charlie Vickers. Charlie is our president of the Sheriff's Auxiliary. So on behalf of the Sheriff's Auxiliary and the Sheriff's Office, we want to present David Key as the Employee of the Month for December. David has been with the Sheriff's Office, I think, since 2013. David is always willing to step up and do anything that we needed him to do. He had a great job working with the school, resource officer, Monday through Friday, whatever, you know, he needed to do was, he had it made over there to give that job up and go over and pick a math shift working for us. He's worked the jail whenever we needed him to work, and just anything we need or anything we asked of David, he always willing to volunteer himself, of course. And I just want to tell David how much I appreciate. He was chosen by his peers at Sheriff's Office as an Employee of the Month. And I could tell you that I don't know that I have seen that many nominations for Employee of the Month in a very long time. So thank you for your service and thank you for everything you do for us. Thank you.
David, I'll read this certificate to you. It certifies that David Key has been nominated for and selected Employee of the Month December 2020, honoring exemplary dedicated service within the Pickens Sheriff's Office in San Bonneville, October.
So our second presentation we want to make tonight is, at the end of the year, we choose an Employee of the Year. So tonight, we have Deputy Flemmons. Deputy Flemmons, you would come up, please. Usually, and again, we have a lot of great men and women in the Sheriff's Office. It's tough to choose those that have been selected as an Employee of the Month on who's going to be our Employee of the Year. Deputy Flemmons steps out and steps up in a lot of different ways. It was not really difficult not to get anything wrong with the rest of the guys, but those that work with us understand that you have really done a lot of great things this year, and that going into a lot of details. We are very proud of you and your family. We appreciate everything you've done and hope you continue to stay with us and doing great things. I see a lot of good things coming. Been with us since 2017. Again, this is just another example of some of these guys and girls that we have working with. We're very proud of you and what you've done and your families.
Thank you. Andrew, this reads, Pickens County Sheriff's Office, 2020 Employee of the Year, Deputy Andrew Flemmons, Chairman, Commissioner.
So again, we thank the four commissioners for the opportunity to be here tonight and be able to...
Thank you for doing that. And I hope that this is something we can continue to expand as we go with all departments within the county and with all elected officials, that we do have a chance to continue to honor everyone. We've got some great employees. That's the best I know to describe. And I think the more you guys get to learn about that, the better it will be. Under item number six, under the consent agenda, I have no items under the consent agenda tonight. Item number seven is old business. No old business is documented on here. Does either of you have any old business that you'd like to discuss?
Yes.
Okay. Under new business, we do have one item. Item number A is a deannexation. It's a deannexation from the city of Jasper. Jasper has met and reviewed this. They just wanted to send over the information to make sure that the county had no issue. Justin, in the Planning and Development Office has taken a look at the property located at 677 Lumber Company Road, parcel 029E. Property would not create an island of unincorporated county and would meet all standards for rural residential zoning in the unincorporated county parcels surrounding the subject property to the northwest, east, and south. The Planning and Development Department would not see any reason for the county to object to this request. And the city had just requested that we do take a look at it and document and form a resolution to accept that deannexation back into the county. Unless you have any questions, do I have a move to accept that?
There's a move to accept the deannexation.
Okay. Now, second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So moving on with that. Then Ms. Harvey, it's now time for the finance report. I can tell by the lights changing by my head, you're getting queued up ready to go.
Okay, thank you. The finance report that y'all have tonight is for revenues and expenditures that were recognized during the month of January, it's March and then January 31st. And the, since it's only our first month of the fiscal year, the expenditure budget should be at 8.3 or less. For, we'll start with the revenues. And the total revenue recognized in January is $1,050,329, and that's 3.62 of the, 62% of the total budgeted revenue. And then we go to expenditures. In the general government functions, we have... I didn't do that. I don't know what's going on. In the general government, we have $216,379, and that's 5.36% of the budgeted expenditures. For judicial, the total judicial expenditures are $190,577, and that's 4.84%. And then we go to public safety. Total public safety expenditures are $1,022,733, and that's 6.88%. And then we have the public works functions. Those expenditures are $215,828, and that's 5.58%. For the Health Department Senior Center and the MATS program, $7,717, and that's 2.69%. For culture and recreation, $74,619, and that is 6.6% of that total budget. And then we go to housing and development, and those expenditures are $45,478, and that's So the total expenditures on the general fund budget, total $1,773,330, and that's For the enterprise funds, the water department expenditures were $74,169, and that's 2.66% of that budget. And the airport expenditures are $48,644, and that's 8.08% of that budget. The line of budget reports were distributed to department heads and elected officials on February 15th. I have copies of all those if you want to go over those.
Okay.
Any questions? One of the other things, I think we have a couple things to discuss on the finance, and you have a copy in your folder at the front of your folder. It's a proposed amendment to the budget, and the reason for this amendment is to fund an unbudgeted position in the general administration budget, and that amount does come out of the contingency fund. And the total needed for the salaries, one of the positions was budgeted, but it was budgeted at a part-time rate, and it's been filled out in full-time. So that was an increase in the salary line. And the total increase to that budget is $77,280, and that would have to come out of the contingency line.
How much is the part-time position before we changed it?
It was budgeted at $13,000. So if this is approved, there will be $24,721 remaining in the contingency.
How much do you think?
24,721. It's right at the bottom. We didn't have very much contingency this year.
I was going to say, don't worry, you're fine. What do we normally have? That sounds similar to that.
Last year, we had around $200,000, but we just, we didn't have the revenues to support, you know, the expenditures that we're looking at.
And again, just a little bit more. One is the Public Information Officer position, the Communications Director. We will, over the course of the year, be able to start pulling from other areas that we have expenses, that we'll be able to start decreasing expenses with that position, so we can save money there. The other is a temporary position. It's not going to be a budgeted position that we carry on beyond this year, but that's in order to create the spot for rewriting and working through our policies and procedures, and then working on an update to our ordinances, so that we can look through all of the different ordinances and get those updated. Our ordinances were originally from 1999, so that's to create that spot that can work directly with Planning and Development, along with all of the departments, the marshal, and everyone else involved in there, to try to get our ordinances where they've been refreshed and gone through is the reason. So that one, the $40,000 of that on the salary side is not to be a continued year-after-year position, but a temporary for that project to be completed. So it's not one that we're going to continue rolling forward, just to give you a little bit better explanation as to where those two went. Any questions on that? Do I have a move to accept the amendment to the general fund budget as presented by Ms. Harvey?
Do I move?
Now, second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I think we have one more item. Do you want me just to go through the next one, or do you want to introduce it?
That's the purchasing card.
Yeah, that's on the purchasing card that's in there. We had met, I know that back in last year, when there were several other things going on, that the purchasing cards were canceled, that when we could kind of get a grip on things. In so doing, we found were some areas that there were things that did need assistance for purchasing, whether it was training, I know that we had for public safety on both sides, from the administration side, but also from the other. So we had sat down and had a conversation to discuss the problems that had occurred previously in ways that we could try to make sure that we looked at how to correct those problems. I know we sat down from the finance side here and then invited over Sheriff Craig and their finance manager from the Sheriff's Office to sit down and take a look at that as well. We have a resolution on one of these pages, if I pay attention to what I'm reading in front of me. Okay, in the second. And in the resolution, two of the areas that we made sure to identify that is different from the resolution prior. One is, instead of being the card, the individual that the card is issued to having to sign an agreement is to any user of that card. So if anyone's ever going to use that card, they have to actually sign the agreement that states that they understand all policies and procedures as it relates to that, and that all documentation will be turned in immediately. The other area that we addressed and failed, I didn't bring the highlighted copy, so I may be searching here for a second.
On the, on the, on item D?
Item D.
Reconciliation. Reconciliation of payment.
Yeah, on the reconciliation of payment, which is on the... On the resolution under item D? Okay. So a financial transaction card issued to any business organization, financial institution, or any duly authorized agent or institution used by a county official to purchase service goods on behalf of the county on the resolution side there. We placed into some of the verbiage on the agreement that showed... This is where I wish I would have brought both copies. I brought the clean copy to sign. I didn't bring the highlighted copy that was sitting on my desk, so I'm searching a little bit longer than what I know what would happen. When the credit card statement arrives, they are forwarded to the elected official for reconciliation, and then the purchase order numbered corresponding to each purchase should be written on that statement. Original receipts and documentation of purchases should be attached and forwarded to the county finance department at least five days prior to the date of that statement. We met, like I said, with our finance department and then with the finance manager and the sheriff from the Sheriff's Office to ensure that those are going to be continually tracked and monitored as they go, each transaction, so that it doesn't reach the point where that statement's there. In that conversation, we've discussed where there would be two total cards, one for general administration for this particular building, and then one for the Sheriff's Office. Not a numerous number of cards that are there, but we, I think, learned over the last year what we can do through checks and purchase orders without the use of a card, but we've learned some of the areas where one was necessary or needed for convenience and that employees wouldn't have to seek out reimbursement every single transaction. So this resolution is to authorize those two cards. It covers the suspension of card privileges and termination of card privileges on the final page, that if they're misused, that either that individual would be suspended from the use order, or the card would be terminated if we have a repeated pattern that's there. Open it up for any discussion before we ask for a move, in case there are questions that you want to ask either myself or Ms. Harvey.
Good job. I guess, who would monitor that misuse?
Well, at the Sheriff's Office, Miranda is the finance manager. She works in here at our office. It would be myself and the capable person that does the...
And this works just as well for you. I know you...
They...
...were frustrated upon the change.
Right, because it seemed like they were being used for so often, just for everything. And when we were meeting the sheriff to discuss that, even they have realized that you don't have to have the credit card to put a lot of different things on, like they thought what was happening before, and just use it just for special things that need to be done online, or training, and that kind of stuff for the employees. And if this resolution is avoided fine, everything will be fine. And maybe Miranda will have that. Yes.
Any other questions or anything?
It's my understanding that we will be basically responsible for the receipts and documentation for the cards that are used that's kept here, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And the Sheriff's Office would be, Miranda would be responsible for anything from them, right?
That was my understanding.
Yes.
Do I have a move to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a move.
In a second.
Aye.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I apologize about not bringing my highlighted copy to move through. That's more efficient. So the next item on our list is under our action items to approve minutes. I know that the minutes from our last meeting on February 4th were sent out. Should also be in your packet as well. Do I have a move to accept the minutes from our last meeting?
So.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So this month, we do not have any rezones that have came through, so we will be able to move past that quickly. I had hoped that Rick Jasper's would be able to be here. He did send us a statement. Rick was working as the chairman of the Department of Transportation Committee, so he got stuck in Atlanta. He texted right before we were walking in to start. But he did send a statement, so I'm going to read through what Rick had sent and provided. We discussed here in the last meeting... We discussed here in the last meeting where, where I had spoke with him about taking a look at any of our boards and authorities that were established by the state to ensure that we're current with, with any updates or any state, state laws that might have changed. So he actually sent a letter address to the commission chairman and the commissioners, saying, following up on your request to review boards that are statute driven, and I looked at three, Airport Authority, Library Board, and the Elections Board. I've been working with our General Assembly's Legislative Council on this work. As you can imagine, during session, they are covered up with work, so I only picked these three at this time. We will get to the others when it slows down and we can take a look at those. The statute creating the Airport Authority was amended a few years ago and is fine. The statute creating the Library Board is fine as well. Upon examination of the local Board of Elections, we have found an issue with how they are appointed. Currently, two members of the Board of Elections are appointed by the Chairman of the Democratic Party and two members are appointed by the Chairman of the Republican Party. These four members then appoint a chairperson. Since these appointing authorities for the four partisan members is made up directly from major political parties, the current appointment process may be in violation of Georgia Supreme Court ruling from a few years ago regarding appointment to the DeKalb County Board of Ethics. In Delay v. Sutton, when he references the law in 2018, where that case, the Supreme Court held that non-governmental parties cannot appoint government officials. Political parties probably qualify as a non-governmental party and the members of the Board of Elections are unquestionably government officials. Mr. Jasper's recommends changes be made to the act governing the Board of Elections and the appointment process be slightly amended. The appointing authority for the four partisan members could officially be the Board of Commissioners. The commissioners would make the appointment for a list of nominees provided by the two parties. The parties would be able to nominate Election Board members, but the official appointment would be made by the Board of Commissioners. The two parties shall nominate four willing members to the Board of Commissioners to select two members from. The board may seek nominations for the chairperson from the community as a nonpartisan leader of the Elections Board. I plan to enter this legislation to enact this change as soon as I receive it from the General Assembly's Legislative Council. Essentially, what he's, what he's recommending is just the change of the appointment and how that appointment process takes place based on how that goes. I know that you guys both have a, a copy of that. I don't believe there's an action needed from our board. It's more of an informative to, to let us know where he's at, at this point and, and where he's moving. In a text message, when we were walking in, he was going to reach out to the Chair of both parties to let them know since this wasn't going to be a shocker or surprise as they came through, but to let them both know what, what he's found and that he would notify us as soon as he moved further. Probably right after we adjourned the meeting, he's going to show up as we're getting ready to walk out. At the moment, that's, that's where we're at. So that is the, the information provided on that and, and he'll keep us up to date if changes occur. So we're going to open it up for guest comments. If you're connected by Zoom and you do have a comment, in the bottom right, if you move your mouse, you should see a, a hand that will pop up. You can press that button, it will raise your hand, and then we can actually unmute your mic so that we can, we can hear as you go through. Hopefully you've been able to hear us a little bit better tonight than our previous meeting with the microphones that are, that are feeding into there. But if we have comments, guest comments from anyone in person that you have? I know you're not going to sit there and not do it. I saw you pulling the mask off.
Well, if, if, if I can, I just want to thank the board for what they've done. I thank the public for my, for my 16 years. It's been very enjoyable. I have got one question though, not to get off topic on Rick Jasper's proposal. And the question I've got as he goes forward with this part of changing the, the Board of Elections, our committee, how, and a question that he might, and I want to get this on record, but the question that he might want to think about is if the county commissioners are going to wind up now appointing possibly the Board of Lect, Lectures Committees as they go forward, are they still going to derive, are they going to have two from Democratic Party or two from the Republican Party? Or if it's a swayed board where you've got all Republican Party candidates on one board, is that going to be an action that would, that would be, wind up being in the Superior Court?
Well, he actually did cover it. It's equally represented from each board. They would just submit, and the way he wrote it, that he wanted to see that each party would submit four nominees.
Okay.
And the Board of Commissioners would select two candidates from each party. So it would still be two from each party. They would just submit additional names so that there was a, a pool to pull from, but it would still be two from each board, from each party that came through.
I agree with that. That would fix it now and have to go court.
Yeah, and it was just on the appointment. He said that, that they found that the, the appointing authority needed to be a government, a government entity, not, not from, from a political party, but it needed to be a governing authority that made those appointments based on that, so.
Thank y'all, but thank y'all very much. I do appreciate what you've done.
Any other comments? Anyone on, on Zoom have a comment that they would, they would like? All right. Any board coming? So at this time, I would like to read through a couple of things. We're going to move toward, or make a recommendation that we move into executive session, and I will read over what we're going to executive session for. We will be moving to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation of rating of a public officer or employee for to interview candidates for executive positions. In addition, to consult with and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlements, and claims, administrative procedure, proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the county or an officer, or in which the officer or employee may be directly involved. So with that information read, do I have a move that we adjourn to the executive session? In a second. Any discussion? All in favor?